We'll go ahead and open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening. Okay, the first will be to approve the agenda. I don't think we're going to switch anything around. When we come to the finance budgets, any questions or major questions should be held. There are some items that are linked to personnel, so we can't discuss them in open session. So little questions, whatever, more than welcome. We will have an executive session because we have to go over some personnel issues, which would or may affect the budget. So that's going to stay where it is. We had discussed whether we should go into executive session first, but I hate to with people on hold. Does anybody have anything they wish to see added or moved on the agenda? Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Teacher, staff, community questions, comments? Do I have any in the audience? I don't have anyone here. Seeing no hands raised, we'll go ahead and move on. What did old business get moved up there?
Just went each other out.
Out of curiosity.
It's actually at the bottom.
I know, that just surprised me. And I want to say I do approve the agenda and I didn't see that. Has anybody got any old business to come before the board?
I do.
Oh, so you're the one that moved it.
I did not. I was just curious. The last meeting we had, we had talked a little bit about getting some numbers that we could actually like see about the second floor. Were you able to get that from Kelly yet? Or is he still working on it?
Yeah, Louis, would you be able to, is Louis? Yeah, Louis, would you, I know you and Kelly were both working on that together, some numbers for the upstairs.
Yeah, I don't have anything official to give you tonight. I know we talked about it and he found the files from a number of years back.
Right.
And it was upwards of 150,000, I believe. And he said he was going to work on trying to get a number.
Could we make sure that we get that on the agenda for next time? Because I do think we need to talk about whether we're going to try to put something on the ballot.
Yep.
And just start doing it piecemeal.
He was doing that, he's not getting a lot of people calling him back. That was last year.
If I could touch on it a little bit during this.
Okay.
Based on where everything budget's going this year, I don't know that it's going to be a good year to bring this up.
Right.
150 is the elevator is what you're talking about, correct? I think the 150 was just for the elevator, correct? Louis?
150 was the, oh, we got a number of years ago.
Right.
So we would be looking, we would probably be looking upward for at least 200.
Right, yeah, I know when we originally. Yeah, when we originally started, it was like 100 and then it went up to 150 and.
I just think it's helpful to just see the concrete numbers.
I agree, we'll have it.
Thank you.
Let's make sure we put the old and new business down towards the bottom again. Anybody have any new business? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. This is great meeting. Finance.
Don't say that yet.
Financial report, believe me, I know what's ahead.
I know.
Financial report, Louis.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So there's a few things in the packet. The first thing is just the normal monthly financial reports for your review. It's presented flexibly, I think those. The second thing is just a budgeting tool that was provided to the board. It was a request from the Ford Valley Board. So what I did was I took our current account code and just gave you a description of what each piece of the account code means and what are some of the common expenses you'd find getting into those codes. It's just something to help you through the process as we review the budget. You have questions as to what that code exactly is or maybe what's hidden that line. You can reference that sheet. It's pretty universal for all districts of the SU. It doesn't include for all codes. I mean, we have thousands of codes. But I try to really hit on the main ones that we use on a normal basis. So if there's any questions about that, I can take that before we get into the budget process.
I congratulate you because all the year I've done, all the years I've done budgets, that page confused me. I congratulate you on it. Anyone have any questions?
That says something.
It's like, what do I need this for?
So going into budget. So the budget included in the package, it was seven pages long. The first page just gives you a summary of the major highlights that are affecting the budget. I try to really identify the things that I know board members will have questions on, as well as the things that are having a significant impact on total expense or education spending. Page two through page six are going to be the details of the budget. And then page seven is the tuition estimated based on current student count and using an estimated tuition rate for next year. So looking at page one, I'm scrolling closer to some of these highlights. So the current budget includes a 5.2% increase in health insurance premiums. And that's the number that we're getting from Bizbit based on their first initial filing. And that amounts to approximately $25,000 in expense. We were originally estimating double digits again, but they came back to us earlier this month with an update at the 5.2. So that was the news. The SU assessments that are included in this budget are based on the GRC SU's first draft that went to the SU board last month. That includes the specialized central office that's called the special ed bill back. Tuition expense, I think we're going to probably focus a little bit on that tonight just because it's having very significant impact on the budget this year. It's based on the current students. And what we do is we move every student up a grade. And so we take into account any ninth grade, any eighth graders that are in Rutland Town, moving them off to ninth grade and kind of estimating where we think they'll attend school. And then we take off any 12th graders this year that are graduating. We won't cover tuition for them. So based on that, we're estimating $467,000 increase in secondary tuition. And that is for 26 new students. 11 of those students are new students that were paying for this year or above what we budgeted for this year. So they're either students that moved in, students that maybe were homeschooling and switched to attend a school for secondary education, as well as the students who are attending schools like MSJ or other religious type schools that we're now paying for. So that accounts for 11 students. The other 15 students is the difference in the size of the eighth grade that's moving up to ninth grade and the 12th graders that are graduating. So based on my numbers, we have 41 students who are going into ninth grade next year that we'll be paying tuition for. There are only 26 12th graders that are graduating. So that's 15 more students that we have to increase our tuition budget. So this occasionally happens, we see these bubbles and it's very impactful for the both taxpayer as well as your expense budget. And then hopefully we may see a decrease in other years as those students move along and we see a higher 12th grade graduate and a smaller ninth grade going in. But it's going to really have a major impact this year, which we'll see when we look at the end numbers. Special ed disallow, $27,000 increase. This is based on the budget discussion at the SU level for our special education parents. This is the amount of time that special ed staff are spending in our schools that is not, that is doing the duties that are non-special ed related. So whether they're working with regular grade students or they're covering recess duty, lunch duty, something that's not special ed eligible. The budget includes a DFY 21 surplus, which was an increase of 146,000 in revenue. Increase in food service, wants to account for the second meals that the board asked me to include. We increased repairs and maintenance line from 68,000 to 75,000 to be able to fund a regular cycle of projects, including like carpeting and asbestos abatement and other projects. And Kelly did include some of his forecast for the future years in the packet. There was a five-year strategic plan, as well as some of the items that he's accounting for in the current year budget. Increase in instruction and furniture line for tables, chairs and cubby replacement. That was about $22,000. Just a shift from the planned operations equipment to supplies. We don't typically buy too much equipment. Equipment is identified as something that's over $5,000. So even if we're buying, let's say, 100 chairs and it's close $10,000, if each individual chair is not over $5,000, it's not considered equipment. So typically, unless we like the attract the purchase or something like that, we don't usually use the equipment line. So we shift that to supplies. We added 9,000 as an estimate for bussing for athletics. And then we have just two things for items to consider.
Four.
Actually, it's four things, I'm sorry, four things. My one I have in front of me is a little outdated. So we have a budget for on-plan FMLA leaves, which we had hoped to do until we saw what the budget impact was from the secondary. So that's not included right now in Australia, that is something we'll be able to include. And Richmond trips, these are to help fund trips for the eighth grade and other grade levels to be able to go on trips without putting the burden on parents. A Janed Para for kindergarten and curtains for the stage. So let's go into the actual details of the budget and then I'll take some questions.
Louis.
So looking at page two, I'm just going to briefly go through some of this. So we have the revenue at the top. Anything highlighted in yellow are items that are still pending. And I'll have an update for those at the next board meeting. So there's four columns. The first column is the actuals from last year. The second column is current year budget, FY '22, that's the year we're currently in. FY '23 budget, that's what we're planning on right now. And then the variance would just be the difference between FY '23 and FY '22 budget. So looking at the revenue, the big change there is that surplus that I mentioned earlier. And then the 499,000, that's the amount we have to raise in property taxes. That's based on our budget increase. So skip to, the next few pages are all the expense things and I highlighted some of the major changes in that first summary of changes sheet. So if you skip down to page six, right now total expense is up by 641,000, which is a 7.45% increase. Education spending, that's the amount we have to raise in property taxes, is up by 499,000, which is 5.96%. And then the last page is the tuitions that we're estimating. We're estimating 166, nine through 12th graders for next year. And then we're also estimating an increase in tuition rates. And typically we estimate about 3%. As schools start to announce those rates, if we haven't approved, announced their rates, if we haven't approved the budget, I'll update this for the second and third draft. Otherwise, we'll keep it as estimates, including the actual number.
Louis, if I could just ask one quick question on this. What is the state's allowed tuition?
Are you referring to the states at the state aperture private schools?
Correct.
For next year, for this year, it's $16,842 for secondary.
So for private schools, what they do is they take the average in-state tuition for public and that's what they pay for the private.
Right, well, I'm just, I'm.
Because you were, what, it says 17 something?
Right.
Yep.
Right, so I just, and I understand for estimation.
Yep.
How to do that, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So I mean, that's all I have without going through the actual details of it in more depth. I mean, if you want me to, I can, but I'll take any questions that you may add.
Louis, can I just ask for your, in this draft budget, if you look at the five-year strategic plan, is the things for '22, '23 included in the draft or no?
Based on my conversation with Kelly, he's accounted for everything that's in his budget he can do within the 75,000.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I have some questions for Kelly.
Yes.
But not mainly when I'm going down through and seeing his plan for the next five years. And again, I'm sure it's estimation. I don't believe every room needs abatement. So it's just, going through what we did numerous years ago, every room is not included in that, but.
Do you want me to see if he can log on? He said to you a bit, no, okay.
I don't need it tonight, no. We still have time.
Okay.
I didn't get this until, so I didn't ask ahead of time.
Okay.
That's all.
No. Would you like him to come to the next meeting though? Yes.
Okay. I think that would be helpful because we want to discuss a lot of things.
Yep.
I noticed that there were some classrooms that weren't included on the five-year plan. I don't know if he was trying to get to every classroom. I don't know which classrooms have already been recently done. I know that in Mrs. Martel's room, which was not listed on there, that this substitute teacher replaced some carpet herself. So I'm thinking that that room probably needs something.
So that was a circle, a mat for circle time and, yeah.
Yeah. So I just, I don't know, like I said, I don't know why some classrooms were left off if they were recently been done.
It looks like the majority of them are there within the next five years.
Right. I'm just wondering why some were not.
Maybe the year, some of the rooms have been redone since.
More recently.
Right, right, so they may not be, they may fall on the sixth year or something. But yeah, we can ask Kelly.
Just an inventory of like when they were last done would be good to know. How often do they absolutely need to be done?
A lot of that is the rooms that have carpet.
Right, we have to redo them.
Yeah, so that's why some, all of them aren't listed because.
Right, like I noticed the tapestry room wasn't, but I know that that was just kind of redone for Mr. Rowe. So that's why, you know, some things I know.
Because there's not carpet in there.
Right.
So Jeff's right, it's mainly those that don't, that have carpet.
So these are all carpeted rooms?
Right. Well, most of them should be.
Yes.
So that would make.
And the hallway has been.
These are all rooms with carpets?
Be done not that long ago.
Wait.
Like Alderman's room says marmoleum.
Yep.
So Alderman's room.
And Norin's and Atori's says marmoleum.
They have, they all have carpet in their classroom.
So then are they still putting carpet in for the ones that say carpet? Because then.
Yes.
They would do.
The pre-K and primary halls say carpet. The main office says carpet. The open wing hallway says carpet.
Right. Usually that's because of noise reduction.
Mm-hmm, but the marmoleum.
Would it be better to do area carpet then?
What's that?
Would it be better to do area carpet that can be replaced more easily and do something like marmoleum? Or is that?
I would defer to Kelly on that. I know Jeff, you've talked to him about, because you had mentioned marmoleum too.
Yep.
A few years ago. So I would defer to Kelly on that. Those rugs that are removable weigh a ton and you go to store them.
Right.
You know, so we wanted to get some of that. And Lynette, I think you talked a little bit about how you've been around. So you've heard like it was tile, then it was carpet and we had.
Coming back to tile, then coming back to carpet.
Yeah, and it's just with little kids that spill with the carpet. There's milk, there's accidents of all sorts.
Like in the kindergarten classroom.
Right.
That's why I was wondering about that.
Right.
But the other kindergarten has tile floor.
So I mean, tile, as far as I think keeping it clean and tile has it way over carpet. I, last thing I knew when we had a major discussion was we said hallways have got to have carpet because the kids coming and going in the hallways is just too noisy for classrooms.
And in the winter, it's slippery.
Right.
It can get really slippery, even with the carpeting that's coming in.
So, you know, I have no problem with them going tile everywhere else. As long as, like you said, I don't know, I think it's just my age. I'm finally finding tile, very slippery, more so than before. If there's some way we could, you know, I'm sure they've got something out there. The old way was sprinkle sand before it dried.
The thing is, the new linoleum type of stuff, it's maintenance free.
Right.
So there's no waxing or stripping. The cost savings, the labor savings is tremendous.
And I have no problem with that in the regular classrooms. But like I said, carpet, because of the disruption, you talk about your lockers, kids walking down on tile floors and the girls are coming in with their high heels and whatever. You know, Uggs would be nice if we could just mandate that they wear Uggs. But usually carpet there. And I know that really you get high traffic, but it's easier for us to replace the hallways like that and keep the noise down.
Yeah, there's, we had one administrator that had heavy heels and boy, tell you could hear her coming, so she wasn't a surprise when.
Never.
You couldn't hear me coming to a stop. I hope you did.
Which is fine, but I'm just saying.
It was just cobble.
Right.
I've heard.
I mean, but when you take 30, 50, 60 kids moving all at once, it sounds like a herd coming, so. Any other questions? Anything for Louis right now?
I've asked him a lot of questions.
I know, and I appreciate that. I've read them all, I appreciate it.
I think the one thing that I just want to say is that, you know, we're really fortunate that we have strong student enrollment. We're not the trend of other schools in Vermont and in the country. I told Pam earlier this summer, I'm not giving any more tours to family unless they have a purchase and sale agreement because it was exhausting and people wanted to see the school, they want to come. And I think that's why people come to Rutland Town. We're an amazing school and we have a lot to offer. This was a gulp for me when Louis sent it. I think these things are out of our control. I'm wondering, how did we, how do we only have 20-something kids graduating? Because we, four years ago, I didn't have a class of 20. So I just wonder, how did those?
The movement in the last year.
Yeah, yeah, but we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of new families that moved to Rutland Town this year and they have siblings. We have 11 that we weren't counting on. So again, I just, we have a wonderful school and I would hate to, you know.
And what makes us even more transient is the homeless factor that's out there right now.
Yep.
The state again is not helping us in that aspect whatsoever. It's, we won't go into the politics of that, but we have students that don't actually live in the town, coming to the town school and may or may not be able to do anything about it because once you go up high, they'll say no. Go ahead and allow. I mean, like the one that was living in not only a different town, but a different state and we were paying for Fairhaven, if you remember. Three years of tuition at Fairhaven, never got a penny back out of that. But it's just to let people know, we're trying our best. But when you're talking 17, 18,000 dollars per child a year, that's a lot of tax money. And we are trying to keep as accurate account and accurate Rutland Town students in our school. But yeah, no, I understand completely about your giving tours of the school. You know, if we want to have one or two that's at a year, but you can't do it on an ongoing basis because you have too much to do as it is. So to stop everything, to give a tour, it's.
I mean, I am for families, but I think some just wanted to, they were, there's not a lot of property in Rutland Town.
Right.
You know, and it came to a point that, you know, I gave, somebody's saying, I'm going to move in. I'm like, I just gave a tour with somebody with a purchase of sale to the house that you're telling me you're looking at.
Yep.
So I mean, we just know the market's still, at least in Rutland Town, very aggressive and it's a good thing.
Yep.
It's a good thing.
One of the biggest things too is the past school board fought to keep a standalone and be able to have school choice. That's another huge attraction, I think, too.
Well, school choices, definitely, definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean, bringing.
When we have people out looking for a home, they're looking at communities that have school choice. So you don't see them moving into any of them where it's mandatory. And not that they aren't, but not to the amount. I know there are people that I know of right now and I'm looking at the houses and I think it's great, but they're looking to get into a school choice because they don't want, for whatever reason, to get the mandatory. They, I know I've heard several different families, Rutland Town, they want to come here, they know the education, they want to keep the kids here and they want to bring the kids here. And I, absolutely great, but it is hard. I think that is one of the reasons why our counts are so stable. You know, we may go up or down 10, 15 kids, but that's it.
It's been about, we're at 359 today.
Right. And high school, Lord only knows, parents, you know, sometimes the kid wants to, or if they take extra credit, they get into college quicker.
Yeah, early college.
There's any number of reasons. Yeah.
But I think, you know, one thing is that, you know, our kindergarten class, there's a class of 18 with one teacher, there's a class of 19 with one teacher. That's a lot of little kids with one teacher. We are frugal as we can.
Are you trying to get me going here, Sarah?
I'm just, and we have a waitlist of pre-K. I'm just saying, it's a good thing, you know.
It is a good thing, but kindergarten, as you know, kindergarten and first have always been my passion because if the students don't get that love of learning and love of school, by the time they hit second grade, you're really far behind and it's hard to catch up. 18 and 19 students in kindergarten is too many. It's just too many. So, but we'll discuss that at another time. Yeah, it's very irksome to me, Sarah will tell you, or whoever, Jeff knows. But any other? And I know we're being frugal.
Yeah, our class sizes are, you know, they're still within what they should be, but I'm just saying that we, this is a good thing. And these numbers are, a lot of these things are out of our control.
Well, when you talk a half a million dollar increase.
Yeah.
It's huge. And that's not doing any special projects. That's not allowing for any thing.
I had more things that I wanted to include.
Well, and that's going to happen, so don't ask.
I know. That's why there was, there was only two, but Louis let me squeeze in two more.
I see him on there, there's one that maybe I can consider personally.
Yeah.
Personally. But, okay, got any more questions? Eric, any questions?
Nope.
You'll notice your job is still on here, so you're safe.
Well, thank you for that.
I just was curious, that snow removal amount.
Yes.
It seems higher than I remember the bid being.
Well, no.
Is that for something else?
No, the, no, that is the same. If you remember, we got a bid one year when we went out to bid and were never asked and it was given to somebody without ever the board being asked.
I think that was before my time, maybe?
Yes.
Yes, you missed it.
That was, yeah, you missed that. So what happened was, in order to get their foot in the door, they came in $2,000 cheaper than the guy that has been doing it for the last century just about. And they did, they awarded it before the board ever knew about it. The second year it came out and he was higher than currently. So we got a one-year deal figuring foot's in the door, I'll continue. Now, you can't go up 3, 4,000 dollars in a year and expect to keep it. So I think right now that is.
The right quote.
Yep, and when I think back five years ago, I think it was like 12,000. And then, so it's not cost of living and everything else, it's not extraordinarily high.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to double check.
That's the other thing, is everything's going up.
Some things are coming back down. Lumber's looking better right now.
We don't need lumber right now.
I don't either. I need oil, kerosene. Exactly. Louis, are we still going out to bid or looking at, I know, have we? Usually it's before now when we look at the gas, the oil prices for our tanks for our schools.
Oh, yeah.
Where we used to go out and get a bid to the lowest or, I assume that is still happening?
We usually do it in the spring. I did it two years ago when the pandemic started. Locked in for a two-year period at $1.65 and $1.75 for the current year. So last year was $1.65, this year is $1.75.
Nice. I know, don't you wish you could get in on these buys?
Yes.
Yep.
So we were just looking in to go out to bid in May or April, depending on the price in the market.
Right.
With the market prices to these days, we may not go out to bid. We may want to wait and see if we start to see lower prices during the summer.
Right.
We'll have to really plan by year and see what's going on.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, because I wasn't sure if the board or people listening were aware what great prices we get by doing that. And that isn't just Rutland Town, that's supervisory union wide, which is why we can. Um, and that isn't just Rutland Town, that's supervisory union-wide, which is why we can buy at such a big bulk and get such a great price. Um, so, thank you. Anything else? Electricity did not raise, correct? You stayed the same? I, I believe it was the same, and I believe propane might have been up a little.
Uh, we didn't re, we didn't increase the electricity budget because we think the actual, um, will come down now that our solar is, is going to be back online by next year.
Okay. Awesome. Now, I noticed that one of the things in there is the twenty-five thousand for enrichment trips.
Yep.
I know that, um, yeah, we haven't talked about that at all, but, um, I know that the supervi, or the, yeah, GURSU meeting, no, it wasn't, Chris, it was our executive committee meeting.
Yes.
Where we were going to try to see if we could, Louis, if we were going to try to see if we could recoup some of those funds from Ezra?
Right, Louis, we discussed this, the, um, enrichments.
Ezra.
Enrichments around the eighth grade and sixth grade and, uh, senior class.
Yep, you know, I'm aware of what you're talking about.
Yep, so because there can be no concessions.
Yeah.
When we get into the winter sports, um, and I know you're talking on that later, of course, masks required, or you have to, you will be removed from the school.
Yep.
No eating, no drinking.
Yep.
Um, no reason to take your mask off. Um, so there cannot be any concessions.
Mm-hmm.
We're not having any sales at the school to try to raise funds. So, um, Chris had mentioned, and, and we talked in the executive, um, committee meeting, which is the three chairs and Chris, um, and we're looking at being, trying to be able to circumvent or supply some money in to help the, our eighth grade trip and their other trips around the, um, supervisory union.
So this was more, um, um, I was thinking that maybe we could pay for half of our trips for, for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That's what I had put as a.
Going forward.
Going forward.
For this year, since it wasn't in the budget.
Right.
That would be a nice use of the.
Right, yeah, that would be great.
Right, and then therefore, this is not a great year to ask.
I know.
For an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to offset something that is more than a year away. Um, yeah, I, I have not gone through and highlighted, fine pointed, the budget like it looks like I'm going to have to. Um, especially when you're talking five hundred thousand dollar increase, um, you've just got to cut everywhere you can. And I haven't had to do that in quite a few years, as you know. Um, I'm not saying there's anything in there, but in order for me to truthfully say, there's nothing I can do with this budget, I have to go through it. Um, but, you know, and I know the twenty-five thousand is not in the current budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, the nine thousand is, um, what did we put in for the, um, second lunches? Is that six, that, three thousand or six thousand?
No, we haven't.
There's a line on page six.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's actually one of the last lines before the total.
Right, oh, nine thousand.
It's fifteen thousand. Nine of that is an addition that I put in for the second lunches, the other six thousand is just subsidy for the, for the normal program. We haven't had a subsidized program in a few years.
Right.
But we are getting higher rates because of the different programs we're running. Uh, so last year, we were on the summer meals program, which offered a higher meals reimbursement rate, and this year, we're under the SSO program, which is the seamless summer, um, to be able to offer free meals, and that also comes at a higher reimbursement rate. So, uh, we have been breaking even, we actually have a pretty decent surplus at the SU level for food service. Um, but once we move to regular operations, we should see, unless we see a really big uptick in participation, we should see us start to, um, either get closer to break even or, or slight deficit based on pre-pandemic levels. Um, it'll take us a few years to work off that surplus, but I kept those six thousand in there just in case.
So Louis, that's for the second, for this year, twenty-one, twenty? So you did put that in, so you, you do, you are predicting that we will have free meals next year for all kids?
No, we'll pay for the second.
But you will pay, so they still have to pay for the first?
Uh, I think this is, I, I think this warrants a, a discussion that we need to have.
Yeah.
Possibly even, I don't know, because, um, we don't know what the, what the state will do for next year for meals. Uh, we know we're running under the SSOs this year, I haven't heard any guidance for next year yet, so we may be back to our old where everyone has to pay, other than free and reduced, paying for their meals.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the case, that, and then, so that's something we need to, to discuss. If people are paying for their first meals, to, does the board want to still continue paying for second meals? Um, or do we want to shift away from that once we get to a, a normal meal program? Putting the second meal aside, once we shift back to where we're running under a normal national school lunch program, we will start to, to see our profits from the meal service go away because the reimbursement rates are going to go down.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, rather than running a surplus in food service each year, we'll start seeing the break even or slight deficit. So that's what the six thousand subsidy is for.
Louis, if I could ask, and it could be Sarah or Eric also, um, this year, last year, of course, was, you can't really count because a lot of it was homeschool or home remote. This year, with free lunches, um, they're really, I would assume families do not see the need or the urgency in putting in for free or reduced lunches because they're already getting free lunches. So are our counts anywhere near reliable, or did you see a drop in the free and reduced, um, applications that have come in? I'm just thinking, if, if I was on free and reduced lunches for my children, why would I bother if it's free this year? And.
That's a good question, Lynette. So, um, we have been told by the state, and we've relayed that message to the schools, that they should still continue to, to try and collect free meal application, free and reduced meal applications, because they're not only used for, uh, free and reduced meals, they're also used for grant purposes, uh, for the, a lot of parents got EBT benefits from the schools because of those applications. So we've encouraged schools to still continue to push that and, and to have parents fill those out, um, also because when, when we do shift back to the national school lunch, there'll be no disruption in services. Um, if they already have a meal application on file, they'll just continue, um, whereas if, uh, they haven't filled it out, then there could be a disruption and, um, they, they may not be free and reduced at the beginning of the school year. Um, so, but however, we don't know that parents are continuing to do it as diligently because of the fact that they're still getting free, uh, free meals. The offset to that, though, is that each year, um, there's usually a thirty-day carryover window, when the school year starts, people retain their benefits from prior year for thirty days, um, before they have to do a new application. That thirty-day window has gone, gone away, so if you were qualified for free meals pre-pandemic, you're still on free meals currently. Um, so that, that has carryover, carryover from one year to the next, so they have not required parents to fill out those new applications each year.
Right.
So that, that's probably offsetting a little bit of the, the decrease in applications that are being filed, um, because it's just a running, a running tally. And then you have the new kids that are direct certified from the state for the SNAP program, um, or Two Squares Vermont, that have been added to it. So I think we're probably still pretty close, uh, but there's really no way to know if we're, we're completely accurate, um, until we really go back to normal.
Right. Right, my concern was especially in the last year and a half, um, with all of the subsidies, everything that people are getting because they're not working or they're home or, or for whatever reason. And we know that our free and reduced counts are used substantially through the state in order for refunds or money we get from the state. Um, your school's only got two percent low and reduced, therefore, you're not going to get much help at all versus sixty, eighty percent. Um, so even though people are getting free lunches and we would never have a car, a child starve, I'm really concerned if we're not really getting accurate numbers, especially in Rutland Town. And then with the new child, um, system, they're working through the waiting system, um, I'm really concerned what's going to happen next year if, say, Rutland Town is one of them that is low. Um, are we going to get less money than we really should? But that's because nobody felt the need to put in for the free and reduced lunches.
I mean, we definitely did a strong push for them. They were mailed hard copy home, they were on our website, they were on Facebook, we emailed them and said we are asking all families fill this out regardless of income. Um, we definitely did a harder push because you had asked us to do that this summer. Um, so I am not privy to that, I can ask, um, Pam Mock and, no, pardon me, Sherry Bethel on.
No, and, and it's not that, it's.
We're usually twenty percent.
Some of it is just getting out to the public and letting them know how important this is. Um, you're actually helping your community, your school by filling these slips out. Um, the pride, family pride, community pride, a lot of things will stop people from doing it. Um, but we know there's a real need out there, and I just want to make sure that people understand that they need to fill these forms out, please, because it's, it's going to greatly help the town, especially, I think, in the coming year. Um, that's all.
Was anyone?
And Lynette, just going back to something I mentioned earlier, so last year, the state came out with the EBT program, um, with federal funds, and, and so we had, we sent notifications to all Rutland Town families, uh, all SU, all SU families, to be most explicit, um, letting them know that if, if they weren't currently free and reduced and they think they may qualify, in order to get the EBT benefit, that they should fill out an application. And, and so the EBT were, uh, debit cards that were sent to families, um, for, for every month because we were, were a hybrid program. So that definitely was a push to families if they wanted those, um, and they heard about it from us, or they heard about it from other families or in the news, and so we did have families that did call inquiring, we directed them to fill out the application. So I think things like that did help to, um, persuade families to fill out that application to get our numbers back where they should be.
I greatly appreciate that. Um, you know, there, there, it's not like years ago, um, even when I started on the board, there's no stigma attached whatsoever. There's only, I think, one person in the school district that knows who's on that list. Um, children no longer have to have a card or what, it, it is all anonymous, they go through the line like every other child and get their food.
Mm-hmm.
So the stigma has been taken away, so I just want to impress upon the parents out there to make sure they get them in, not necessarily this year, I mean, if they can, great, but make sure next year we for sure get it.
Was anyone, um, watching the, um, meeting or conference from last week?
Yeah, I attended.
So, uh, at noon on Friday, they had Representative Kornheiser on, and she's on the committee on the people waiting.
Yes.
And she kind of alluded to that this form is, as we know, it's going away.
Yep.
And that they're going to be doing like a universal form.
Yes.
That's going to be simpler and that everyone's expected to do.
Yes.
So I think in the future, this will probably not be as much of an issue.
Mm-hmm.
But for this year, I think she said that they kind of, they are considering what our numbers are based on what we have of those forms in for where they start for our people waiting or something like that.
Right.
In addition to SNAP benefits as well, anyone that's receiving.
And for Rutland Town, I, I still, just so you know, I'm still digging, trying to get the information for what the Senate is doing, um, and I've heard percentages of twenty-five to thirty percent for Rutland Town increase. So that, and that has nothing to do with this, but I have not, I can't confirm that because they're very hushed, they don't, of course, want that out because they don't want the people to know yet, apparently. Um, so we have to go as if it's nothing, but that's one of my concerns of whether we have these forms, we really need to get it in there, um, to help try to mitigate some of this, um, additional taxes we're going to get.
She also mentioned, um, that there are going to be some districts that are hurt more than others with the changes, but that they are also looking at ways to offset that with grants or some other thing. So I kind of left it, the meeting, like, you don't know till you know.
Exactly.
And so there's no reason to worry about it at this point, and I think their, December tenth or so is when they're voting on it.
Yeah, and she's, she was like, I don't know if the governor will sign it.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what she said, too.
I mean, and, and it's not that, it's not, I want to say, it's not that I'm panicking, I'm not.
Yeah.
But when you look at five hundred thousand, and that may or may not happen out there, um.
It probably won't help us.
It won't help, but no, it's definitely not.
As badly as we're thinking it could.
But looking at, just looking at what we, we have here.
Already have, yeah.
We don't need much to hurt us more. So, um, that's why I just wanted to explain why I'm looking at it a little more carefully than normal.
Do we know who ADO is? There's no name on it.
It's Russ.
It's Russ?
I think so.
Okay.
Russ, is that you on the telephone ending eight zero? Could the person calling in with the phone number ending in eight zero identify yourself? I think they're reading.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, that's what I thought, Sidowski.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. I, I knew I recognized it.
Okay, no, he, I just thought it was Russ. Okay, um, any other questions? And I'm sorry to take up so much time. Okay, go ahead, Louis, you got anything else?
Uh, that's all I have for now.
Okay, and, and we will need to go, as you know, into executive session later for some financial stuff. Okay, consent agenda, director's orders. There were several warrants sent out in the last, uh, month. Um, I did have a question on a couple, they were satisfactorily answered for me, I'm trying to think of what they were now. Um, I can't even think what they were, but they were substantial. One of them was tuition, and I think it said only one for one semester or something, and it was like twenty-five thousand, I'm thinking, that can't be right, but it was actually for two students, um, and the one that was going way out of state. Um, I did ask about that, too, yep. Um, did anybody have any questions on any of the warrants? Of course, you know, if you do, you can get hold of Louis.
Louis answered me about the dishwasher, that was another big one.
Yeah, it was big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised, yep. I appreciate you doing that, I hadn't caught that yet. Um, I need a motion, um, for consent of the warrants.
I make a motion and send the warrants.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You? unanimous. Approval of the minutes of October fifth.
I found one error.
Ooh, that's good.
It's just that the guest was not Brooke Caputo, it was Brooke Lipman.
Lipman, okay.
Different person. And it, it carries down to number three.
Also, okay. Okay. And you said that was Brooke Lipman?
Yep.
Okay. So under guest public, Brooke Caputo is changed to Lipman, and again, in three, Brooke is changed to Lipman. Are there any other additions, changes? deletions in the minutes?
Tina, can I just ask for a spelling, Lipman?
L-I-P-M-A-N.
Okay, so.
Thanks.
If I could have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Tina.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, um, I included a lengthy report. I'm not going to go through all this tonight with you, but I will, a couple of highlights. But, uh, I'll start off with the COVID-19 testing, uh, since there was a, a letter sent out to Rutland Town families, well, as all families in the GRs, about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. Uh, I just want to let you know that we did meet with the admin group today. Uh, we received, I think, uh, just over two thousand antigen tests, um, late Friday. Uh, so our goal is to, uh, beginning next Monday for all new cases, is to begin the test to stay program, uh, Rutland Town schools, as well as all SU schools. Uh, you know, the consent form has gone out, it's been sent out, we'll be reissuing that link. Uh, I know there have been some, uh, people that questioned about the consent form, just, uh, you know, because it is through the state, it's not done locally. Uh, they tried to streamline the process a little bit because they've broken down testing into two categories. You have response testing, which is antigen and PCR, as well as down to the, the surveillance testing. Uh, so the, the, the form is actually for the response testing. So, um, parents did ask about all the information. I know we have a couple of parents ask, uh, why did that provide all the information? Basically, it's just, to be honest, the Department of Health answered this question for us. Uh, if there is a positive case, uh, we are legally obligated, uh, under regulations to submit all that information to the, uh, Department of Health. It's no different than what we'd submit on a line list when there is a contact, a close contact. Uh, but I know sometimes when people see it all spelled out, uh, it, it just goes right to the Department of Health and it just sits in a file. But, uh, you know, there is no violation of HIPAA or FERPA or anything along those lines. Um, but it just, as you said, it's, it's used really just to, in the event of a positive case. Uh, so there'll be information coming out by then this week to the families, kind of detail this a little bit more. You know, Sarah and Eric will also, uh, be, you know, detail on, uh, you know, building specific plans. And the test to stay is really, it's to be used only in the event of, uh, if there is a positive case and for, uh, unvaccinated individuals who've been identified as close contacts. Um, we've had.
In the school.
What's that?
In the school.
In the school, yes, in the school. We have had individuals ask if, uh, we could just use this randomly. It's like, no, uh, we are, there's a supply chain issue. We know, we're aware of that because we're not the only state who is on to this, uh, who's, you know, doing, doing this, or testing. So, uh, our goal is to make sure that we, uh, we don't, you know, just, you know, waste test kits, that we, we keep them in place, that, because the ultimate goal really is to keep our kids in school. And we know that the biggest headache that we've seen across the SU is when close contact and we have, uh, kids being sent home, uh, for seven days and then scramble to try to find a test and then, uh, bring them back in. And I'd say the large majority of these kids are, are healthy and they come back healthy. Uh, so really, this allows us, you know, to, you know, to bring these kids back in the next day. Uh, it's a bit of a small headache, but, uh, for families and for, for staff, but we'll get through it, but, you know, it's, all right. Uh, any questions on that? So I'll, I'll take questions as we go through because I don't want...
I, I still find it a little strange that, um, they can ride the bus. But I understand, like, access to school is important, but the parent still has to be available to drive them anyway. And it potentially could be causing more close contacts. So I wasn't super excited about that part of it, but I also didn't know what the, you know, decision-making process was going into it.
Yeah, I mean, Tina, that's a very good point. I think it's something which I'll, um, I speak with Jill Briggs Campbell now on a regular basis, so I'll bring that up to her tomorrow as well. Uh, there are some inconsistencies in terms of, um, when you look at how things are, I mean, to be honest, even last year, we'd cram all the kids on the bus and then as soon as they got off the bus, we're like, okay, spread, spread out, you know what I mean? So it just, it, it's, you know, sometimes you scratch your head and like, that really doesn't make a lot of sense. Uh, but I think in this particular case, that, that has been one of our concerns because if a student does test positive on antigen test, then we look at, you know, go back to contact tracing, uh, on the bus, you know, things like that. So, um, we, we'll look into that and see. I think we'll, you know, hopefully we, there won't be an issue. I think, you know, there are a lot of, uh, parents who will drive their kids in on those days because, uh, technically you have to wait fifteen minutes then if the student's, you know, negative, off they go, uh, right in class. If they do test positive, then they would have to, uh, go home. So, uh, but it's something which we'll, we'll look into. So, thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, moving on to the, the next part, I guess, uh, there will be some more information, you know, about, um, people have asked about surveillance testing. I think we're scaling back a little bit on that. Uh, we're trying to really put our, our sole efforts on to the antigen testing, the test to stay right now. Uh, we will be providing PCR testing a little bit once, uh, you know, a little later, we'll have more information on that. I'm not going to talk too much about that tonight. Uh, but that's really just to be used, you know, in the, in the event of if there is a positive case and, uh, in terms of availability and just making things more convenient for, uh, families. But, um, the surveillance testing, uh, we're going to really, I guess, use for, uh, you know, unvaccinated, uh, staff. And we do know that there is a, uh, a mandate coming down from the states. Uh, we've talked about this, and it was just the, uh, the OSHA, um, regulations came out to the, the last week. So we're kind of looking to see if it's to be the state of Vermont. Uh, Secretary French has been saying all along, right on Thanksgiving, we'll see a, uh, a mandate, you know, for OSHA employees, which, you know, we are an OSHA SU, and so therefore would impact our staff. Uh, but we do anticipate that what it would be, it'd just be a, uh, unvaccinated staff that would just have to be regularly tested. And we also look at the winter sports guidance, that if there is an unvaccinated student athlete, uh, that there would be, uh, weekly testing as well. And so we're looking at, uh, considering the toll that testing's going to take on our, uh, our, our nurses and admin, you know, other individuals. Uh, we just want to make sure that, you know, we are, at the end, we're operating a school. Uh, we're not interested in becoming a health center. Um, we're doing these things to, to make sure we can get our kids back in school, uh, so there is a minimized disruption of learning. But, uh, we do have to kind of pick and choose. I think with surveillance testing, out of the, the three, uh, between antigen, PCR, surveillance, I think surveillance is one that we could really scale back on with minimal impact. If there's a need for us to bring that back, you know, full scale, we would look at it. But I think right now, uh, that would be scaled back and used only in isolated situations, you know, with, uh, the staff mandate or the, um, student athletes are unvaccinated, excuse me. All right, uh, moving on here, just wondering what else is in this wall. So winter sports updates, uh, I think, uh, we all should have heard about this and seen this. Uh, we have asked, and I know Lynette alluded to this earlier, and Sarah, I'll let you and Eric talk about this a little more. Uh, across the SU, we will be allowing, uh, spectators in our buildings for events. Uh, you know, all spectators will be asked to wear masks, uh, properly. Uh, it means covering both mouth and nose. Uh, if there is an issue, uh, people will be, you know, removed from the building. We will ask them to leave. Uh, I know the question to ask, well, what happens if people continue to abuse us? Well, you know, we can technically just, you know, shut it down and just say, well, we'll have no spectators. I think, considering the, you know, the years we've had and I think the importance for, uh, for the kids to, you know, get back in, start playing sports and doing events and doing things, uh, I, I think we want to make sure that we do everything we can, you know, you know, for our kids. And I think our kids enjoy having family there, you know, spectators there, watching them play. And I think the, the least we can do is just, you know, mask up. If there is a change as we move into the second half of the year after winter break, then, uh, we can look at that. But right now, all spectators are going to be asked to wear masks, uh, indoors. Now, like I said, no food, no drink, uh, you know, things along those lines. So really not much. Like I said, I'll, I'll let Sarah and Eric talk a little more about building specific plans there. The last big piece I wanted to just kind of touch base on was the, uh, GRCSU strategic plan slash portrait of graduate. We met, uh, the admin team, uh, central office and building admins, uh, and, uh, some of the, some of the board chairs that were to make it. Uh, we met with a, uh, Mike Nicholson, who's representative for Patel for Kids, who's going to be overseeing the GRCSU, uh, strategic plan slash portrait of graduate. It's kind of a two-step process. Uh, the first step will be, you know, uh, designing a portrait of graduate, kind of looking at the, uh, you know, what we want out of our, our students, like, you know, values, you know, mores, ethics, and kind of, that'll kind of drive our vision in terms of where we're going. And then the next step is once we identi- identified those characteristics, we then move into developing a five-year strategic plan. We will be inviting, uh, all, all stakeholders, representative of all stakeholders, would be, you know, all board members are invited to participate in, in this. Uh, you know, parents are invited to participate, staff members. A letter will be going out to staff tomorrow, uh, inviting them to participate in this. A letter to families will be going out by Friday morning, the latest, uh, inviting them to participate. The one thing we do ask is that if someone volunteers to participate, that they commit to, there are, there are five meetings, uh, that will be held between five to eight-thirty, and they'll, they'll be on this memo. The first one is December seventh. Um, and that's, that's important to us, is that if someone's going to be there, there are, there for all five meetings, we, we can't have somebody just moving in and out. It's really not necessarily fair to, uh, to, because, you know, we will have to, you know, make some decisions because we have five hundred people who want to be a part of the design team. We think it'd be great, but we, we're not going to have room for five hundred people. It's just, that's unrealistic. So, uh, the first meeting will be virtual, you know, considering just where we're at and conditions as we move into the, uh, you know, January, February, we'll just, uh, just kind of see where we're at within our communities and what we feel comfortable with. And if we need, if we meet in person, that'd be great. If we continue to meet virtual, we'll move there. So, uh, there will be more information on the strategic plan coming out to the community. So, all right. And, uh, I think that was all the big ticket items I had on there, so.
Any questions for Chris?
Did you say five-thirty to eight?
Uh, it'd be five-thirty, eight-thirty.
Five-thirty, eight-thirty, thanks.
Any more questions? Billy Elsa?
He had the thumbs up. He gave a thumbs up.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's hard to.
Oh, Lynette, can I say one more? I just want to add one more thing to test to stay because it, supply chain, um, while we, like, and this is just more, just kind of visioning forward. One, Sarah, Eric, and Lisa Lounas are not in charge of how many test kits are ordered. And there is a potential possibility as we get into January or February that we all sudden, you know, we get a shortened supply. And so as much as we'd like to continue this program, like I said, there is a supply chain issue. So right now, things look good, but as we move into the winter, there might be a shortage. So, you know, as I said, we just continue to ask families to continue to make good decisions to help us, you know, uh, eliminate this. We do, we do think as families have their kids, you know, vaccinated and get fully vaccinated, that it will help with numbers. Uh, this has been no way a pro or, you know, con against vaccine, just a reality. Um, but we just want to make sure that, you know, parents are aware of that. So as we're making these phone calls, you know, in the future, it, that there might be a point in time where we make a phone call and say, you know, we have to go into quarantine because we don't have antigen tests. And it's not because we didn't run to Walgreens the night before or, or Sarah or, you know, Eric didn't order them. It's because there's a supply chain issue. And so, uh, we'll try to be forthcoming about this. I think at board meetings, we'll kind of give updates, as well as I think Sarah and Eric will do a nice job of communicating that to families. But I just wanted to just let us know because I think people are excited about this and we hope that it continues. But like I said, it's a supply chain issue, just as they're warning everybody about the holidays, that, you know, things just aren't out there. You know, that's our concern as well. So I just want to just kind of put that out there, just let people know. Thank you.
Okay. Principals report.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so there, there was a lot of stuff on here. I won't read it word for word, but there is some information about the Alexia Core Five and, uh, Power Up Challenge. So you can see how the kids can move their RAM up the mountain for each grade level they compete, complete at the end of the month. Um, they, we restart it every month. We congratulate those classes that are the winners. Um, we're going to do a PD, thanks to our amazing interventionist, um, in December that helped teachers further implement the program now that we've been using it and it's up and running. Um, more to have them practice with some skill builders that, um, kids may need to work on that are identified. Uh, huge thanks to Four Winds. Um, they, we have our parent volunteers and Four Winds is back up and running. Thank you, Tina, for helping with that. Uh, Wonder Feet Lip Sync Challenge, thank you to all the parents that supported us, um, for the lip sync challenge and a shout out to Kelly McGee and Tegan Wait. Uh, we now have three free field trips to the Wonder Feet Museum and we just need to know, I may just have a kid draw out of a hat because everybody wants to take their students, which is great. Uh, teachers met to review map data, uh, completed three sixty assessments on social, emotional ratings of their students. Uh, middle school's been working on a common rubric for habits of work. Uh, Mrs. Dugay's fourth grade class reenacted a reader's theater. Kelly McGee did Glow Week in the library, um, which was super fun. That was all, um, student-driven, so there's a few pictures in there, if you can see them. Uh, Raya Whitehorn was recognized as her superhero of the month, um, for the character unique this month. The character trait is perseverance. Um, athletic update, I just put some statistics in there for coaches, how many kids participated. Um, basketball starts on the fifteenth, ends in February eighteenth. Um, as Chris said, um, you know, spectators are allowed. We need everybody to wear a mask. Uh, there will not be any food concessions, so no eating or drinking while in the gym. We will also have, uh, um, somebody doing a, a YouTube channel, so it will be livestream as well.
Livestream.
Yep, so we'll still have the livestream for people that, um, want to watch it from the comfort of their own home. And I got a lot of, um, positive feedback on that last year for just relatives all, you know, Florida, Colorado, that were like, oh, I can watch my niece or nephew. Um, student council update, um, so we have, um, the president, vice president, treasurer and secretary listed here. Um, meetings are held weekly, um, during lunch on Fridays. Currently, um, Ms. Daley informed me that they're working on a holiday service project for the community and also a presentation to Eric and myself about our dress code. Fifth and sixth grade, um, are, they have TA ambassadors and they're, uh, have weekly meetings during lunch on Wednesdays. And they're also working on a holiday service project for the community. And they feed some of their suggestions to the middle school, um, the seventh and eighth grade student council. Up for Learning Team, um, those meetings are held weekly during lunch. Um, and those students are working on developing a monthly student-led virtual whole school assemblies. Um, Eric and I met with the students for Up for Learning last week.
Last weekend.
Okay. Um, and I, I received a couple of phone calls from other principals and teachers from other schools just complimenting Rutland Town students, saying, I have never, they were, they were very mature, they were so respectful, you have an amazing kids. That's always wonderful to hear.
Yes.
Um, food service update, this was from just November first, so we're, we're adding up here, cha-ching, cha-ching. We're, we're over thirty-two hundred dollars as of November first. Um, as Tina had mentioned, we do, um, dishwasher installation is now complete. Uh, we're looking to hire a new custodian. Uh, lots of things happening, uh, in November. Quarter one ended last week, quarter two started today. I forgot to put on here, um, this Wednesday, the tenth, will be an eighth grade high school fair in our cafeteria. So if eighth graders want, we have tables spread out for five or six schools. Um, so kids can come, um, and meet with those area high schools. No school this Thursday for Veterans Day. Um, the eighteenth and nineteenth, students are dismissed a little before noon at eleven forty-five for parent teacher conferences and for middle school grades five through eight are student-led conferences. Um, teachers are scheduling those directly this year, so they should be getting information from their child's classroom teacher or TA teacher. And then we have a few days off for Thanksgiving break.
Wonderful.
Know if you have anything to add, Mr. Gross?
Anybody have a question for Sarah?
Well, I'll let Eric talk first.
Yeah.
I should say the Up for Learning presentation was amazing. The, the kids knocked it out of the park. They really did an amazing job, um, which is really great because it was, it was refreshing to see students to stand up and be able to present themselves. They practiced, they rehearsed, they're ready to go. And they, they knocked it out of the park. They did a great job.
How many kids are in that and what grades?
Uh, was it five or six? I'm trying to think of.
And there's fifth.
Five, six, seven.
Seventh.
And, yeah, she's eighth, right? Is it eighth also?
I think it's all middle school. I know there's five, six and seventh.
I think there's an eighth grader in there or not.
That's great.
Yeah.
I gotta double check that out.
And the other thing was, just to plug in for the teachers, just they're really doing a great job. I mean, they're weathering a storm. They're getting, we got a lot of work done in two months. They've got a lot on their plate and they're doing it. So just plug in for them for doing some amazing job. They're really, they're really struggling through this and they're doing a great job for the kids. And the kids are happy. They're, they're great in the classes. They're great in the hallways. It's just been a very tough couple of months, but it's been a very good couple of months. A lot of good things are happening.
That's awesome. The only thing we have, we're still waiting on some test results to be presented to us on how everything's going.
Yeah, yeah. They, Chris had mentioned, he had, because I was the one that had brought that up.
Right.
And he had asked that they could get, have a little bit more time. So they're going to present that December.
Hopefully they'll present it in January, December meeting.
So what Tina had asked.
The maps test.
What about the fall map, like a two or three-year look? And then in January, we'll take a look at.
The aspects.
Things along those lines, so.
Okay, the only reason I'm hesitating is next month is, should be meeting, should be almost all budget. So, so we can, I mean, we barely started and next month, we really have to dig into it. Because I didn't look the date up in January when we have our pre-town.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's all. That's the, I mean, I want to get them too. But I, we just really have to make sure our budget is squared away next month.
And we want to talk about time meetings in December as well, just starts.
Yep. Yeah. So, yeah. I mean, unless we want to meet a second time in December, which is really a tough, tough time.
Especially with the Batel for Kids already being added in there.
Right.
And the JRCSU is the 22nd.
Yep. Exactly. I mean, you run out of days and I.
Maybe the first, maybe the third we meet if we have to.
If we have to. Usually, yeah, on the schedule, we tried, Rowland Town meets the, you know, we have one scheduled meeting. Two weeks later is our, if we need one, we take it. So we could see what happens on, at a regular meeting.
Yeah, and then go from there.
You were going to talk to Al, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if anything from that information would.
Help guide the budget.
Guide the budget though, is what I'm wondering.
We just got to keep what we have.
That's why I was wondering.
The presentation, there's certain things we can cut down on, certainly. As long as it, you know, I don't want to cut the presentation short, is all. I mean, if it's not.
I don't think it was a very long presentation.
Yeah, maybe if you could get things ahead of time. If Al, Al's amazing. He's our data guy for the district. So Eric and I met with him this summer just to get a preliminary look at.
Yeah, I already know with Al, so they know, they're going to work, so.
Okay, yep. So we get, we'll put them on for December.
Okay.
Just knowing that, you know, it's a time.
We'll try to keep it short.
Yeah, and if they have.
It just might be good to know if we need to build anything into the budget or consider anything.
Or the absolute must haves. Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Does he'll touch base with them or would you like to?
I already did.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
He's on it. And then I had a couple of questions on here.
Sure.
So I saw Raya was recognized. Was there also an elementary girl, Kelly Knuckelson, recognized? Or is that something different? Is that just the teachers that did that?
So Mrs. Norton has a superhero of the month that her students vote on.
So it's only her class?
It's only her class. So she does that and we always promote that too, yeah.
Which is very nice, but then I, I can imagine how some of the other students might feel if their class isn't doing that.
So we, I don't announce that, like usually at the end.
That's just on Facebook?
That's just on Facebook. We post Mrs. Norton sends a.
Very sweet.
Yeah, so we, I don't, of course, I congratulate them in person, but I don't announce that schoolwide. Ms. Daley announces this schoolwide.
I was just curious because there is such a difference in ages at the school.
Yeah.
If maybe there could be a fifth through eighth recognized and a K through four.
Yep.
Every month. I think that that would help with the community spirit and just something to think about.
Yeah.
Because there's such a difference in why they're being recognized.
What was the thing we did a couple of years ago where they had heroes?
It was a character. Oh, and we did elementary and, yeah.
They used to have the reward, awards thing at the cafeteria.
Yeah.
And then a second question. I know last time we talked about the lunches and how we were making the students purchase a whole other lunch. And then Louis said that we should be able to just do à la carte if they just wanted another entree. Is that still, was that looked into or, so this is reflecting that difference? Okay, perfect.
Louis, did you speak to them? I know I did in person.
Yes, I spoke with Ken Babcock and cleared up that misunderstanding.
Awesome. So that's helpful.
Yeah.
And then.
I also have a question about the lunches.
Sure.
I'm loving that so many kids are taking advantage and we're helping these kids out. Are we tracking it all? Like what ages are getting these lunches? I imagine mostly middle schoolers are getting the second lunches.
No.
Are we tracking that at all?
Yeah, yeah. The kitchen isn't, you'd be surprised. I mean, I have a, I told the parent, I said, and it's tough to monitor because some kids will get school lunch and bring their, like I had a parent call and say, my daughter hasn't been eating like all week. And I'm like, she is chowing down school lunch. She's like, oh, my gosh. Here, I was asking. I'm like, why didn't you say anything to your mom? So yes, it's tracked and you'd be, Eric and I have taken a peek at it. You'd be surprised. We're like, wow, all those little kids wanted that for a second and the middle school kids haven't. So yes, the lunch staff is tracking that by each lunch level.
I'm not positive about that, Sarah. If you wanted to clarify, I know we're tracking the amount of meals, but I don't know if we're tracking who, because it's not going under who's getting the meals. It's going under guests and I, I think it's just one guest account. I don't think she's.
It's one guest account, but when I, when I've gone down there, Becky will show me like three, grades three and four lunch got 22 today. So maybe she's not keeping that. I see it daily, but maybe she's not keeping track of that daily. She's just putting it in. I can follow up with her.
Okay, yeah, maybe she has a different guest account for each grade or something.
No, it's under one guest account, but she's handwriting for each grade. So I wonder if she's just, yeah, I'll follow up with her.
Not submitting it.
Right.
Yeah, then she's probably, yeah, so maybe we're not tracking it, Billy, for the long haul then. Maybe it's just on the day.
And just the other thing I have to throw out there, I mean, I, I'm not really sure who's taking advantage of it or what. But I mean, the one thing I'd say is that, I mean, the meals that are designed by the child nutrition department and the serving sizes should be what the typical serving size should be for kids of those ages. And if we're now encouraging kids to get seconds, are we kind of going against what the serving size should be? I just.
Yeah, we are. Yes, we are. They're hungry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, please feed them.
Yes.
And I'll say that I'm, I'm in the cafeteria quite often. I saw my first lunch wasted today. I gave a kid a lot of grief, but I have not seen kids wasting meals.
Good.
Especially the second meals. I'm just not seeing it. Happened today, one ghetto.
What about the fruit?
Yes, those get wasted. So there's a bowl that we'll give to some teachers and counselors that meet with kids. So we put the share bowl back out because once a student takes an apple or a milk or something, they can't put it back. Drives me nuts.
Right.
So I didn't want to see all that get thrown out. So we'll take some for counselors and then sometimes we'll, it gets tossed.
We're forcing them to take the fruit.
With their first meal, they have to take a fruit and a vegetable, correct?
So, so just something to think about. My kids said that the placement of the payment versus where the salad bar is or something.
Yep.
It's difficult for them to go through that line.
Yes.
So I don't, so it's hard for them to get the fruit that they want. If they, like they just take the one, the quickest one and run, even though they might actually eat something else, but they don't want to go through that or something like that.
Yeah, there, the salad bar, when you walk in, then the salad bar is like perpendicular.
Right.
Instead of out in the cafeteria. And then when you get out, then there's like a basket of apples.
Yeah, so they just go and they grab the apple even though they're not going to eat it.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's a way to reconfigure that so that kids actually, or you're like more easily go to it?
It's keeping them spread out as much as possible in the cafeteria. If we're to move tables out to put the salad bar outside, we'd lessen the number of seats available and we'd have kids closer together.
And we're trying to keep all the kids spread out.
Apart at this point in time. And we're able to do it. I mean, we can look at it again, but it's.
I don't know. Just logistically, it makes it.
Those tables, they will put them closer together.
They just, I don't think they, I think that that's one of the reasons that they are tossing those, the fruit. Because it's just, they have to take it. They don't want it. They may have had, chosen something else that they'd eat, but it's hard to do that in the time that they have.
The line to those is pretty, pretty slow.
I know, but kids, kids want to sit down and socialize. They don't. I think part of it is on them, but I'm just curious if there was a different way to set it up that.
And I haven't seen a lot of different fruit on the salad bar.
Or maybe put the apples at the salad bar so that they have to go to the salad bar. I don't know, like.
Take a look at it again.
I don't know. There's some way to like force them through that line.
It's spacing.
Yeah. But if they're forced to go through the line, because that's where all the fruit is instead of just the piece of fruit at the, I don't know. Because you want them to go through that line, right? So if you put all the options at the line, then they have to go to the line.
Take a look at it again.
I don't know. I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not the best setup.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's not.
The last thing I just want to say is I love how there's a student council, that they have trickled it down to fifth and sixth grade ambassadors, that there's the Up for Learning, that a lot of the teachers are volunteering for coaching positions. I just want to thank all the teachers and the guidance and the staff, admin staff for trying to kind of beef up the co-curricular and the leadership options at the school. I think it's going to really help in the future for these kids to be confident in themselves and also gain some great skills to work in the real world.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Eric or Sarah?
Hearing none. You all set, Billy? Okay. I remembered to look that down. Okay, contract recommendations. You received the contract recommendations in your email and your packet. The. I just got to go through here real quick a second. Is it easier if we do the resignations first?
Sure.
That, because a lot of those are on the resignations. If we go to resignations, I'll need a motion. We have Sarah Davis, custodian, resigned effective October 22nd. Hannah Anderson was a pre-K para. She resigned also on October 22nd. And Michael Slattery was a custodian, resigned effective November 4th.
I make a motion to approve the resignations.
Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you have, because they're staff personnel, I have some questions, but I'll ask in executive session. Nothing I think that's going to change anything. If we could do the professional staff and support staff, extracurricular, I'd like to wait until after executive session. Professional staff, this is the contract recommendations. Sierra Maxwell. You know, and you've got me stumped. What's LTS?
Long-term sub.
Thank you. For grade one, teacher.
I've been better about that, haven't I, Mr. Gross? He's like, these acronyms are killing.
You think I would? And I just figured that one out the other day and I forgot it again. We have Colby Haskett. It's a horizontal movement in, on the chart. Then in support staff, we have Hannah Anderson. She did resign from her current position and moved to a building sub, from a building sub to a pre-K para. We have Michael Slattery, also had resigned. And now he's back on?
No.
Okay, because that just really doesn't, why are we recommending to give him a contract then?
That they were initially on there, but we just had to recommend because they did technically work.
Okay, even though they've gone now.
Right.
Well, it's a nice one to put in a day or two. Okay. So, and then we'll move on to Samantha, I thought they left and came back. I don't know. Samantha Ferguson, a building substitute. And Andrew McCarthy, also a building substitute. And Allison Patterson, she is, been hired as a first or a full-time custodian. Do I have a motion for those contract recommendations?
I make a motion to approve.
Jeff, you okay?
Yep.
Oh, I just want to make sure your voice worked.
Yeah.
Any questions on the proposed contract recommendations that have been mentioned? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Look back over again. Leave request. You did get a leave request in your packet.
Right behind this paper. Right behind contract recommendation.
Not in my pile, it didn't.
Okay.
Got it. I didn't go and buy it because it wasn't in blue. My printer at work, I no longer have a, one that does color, so it's kind of throwing me off. Okay, we do have a request from a teacher to take a medical leave. Will not be until, what are we talking? The middle of April, first to middle of April?
April 10th to the end of the school year.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the leave request?
Make a motion to accept the leave?
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Billy, I know your voice works too, but I haven't heard you. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm not allowing anybody to sleep. Okay, vacancies. You also got a list of vacancies for the supervisory union as a whole. Chairs report. Again, I really don't have one. Budget is the big topic right now. We'll see how our regular scheduled meeting in December goes to see if we're going to need another meeting in December. Hopefully not. I know how constricting time is. Policies. Now, some of these will look familiar to you, but we're doing them all over again. So we'll start with the role of policy. We read it once. This would be the, where we're going to. Tonight would be approval for it. Do I have any changes for policy A1, the role of policy? Do I have a motion for adoption?
Make a motion for adoption.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next one we have is policy dissemination, administration, and review. This is also the second read on this, so it's up for adoption tonight. Do I have any questions or changes that you see for this?
I have a question.
Yep.
Should it read teachers' responsibilities as in the plural? So it should be teachers' apostrophe responsibilities?
Getting pretty picky on this, Chris.
Yeah, that, that would cause a whole another read through.
Yeah, for everybody in the union.
So don't worry about it. I mean, it's, I don't think it's technically grammatically right, but.
Multiple teachers?
It's the teacher handbook will include, it says, the teacher handbook will include board policies related to teachers' responsibilities.
Yeah, so.
It's close enough.
That might be one we can, I can just.
Okay.
As we all put it in, we can just shift that.
Okay. It doesn't change content. It's just.
Right. Right. It's just that it goes to each board and then to the supervisory union.
And then, yeah, that's it.
Do I have a motion to adopt the policy dissemination, administration, and review?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The next one is the weapons and firearms policy. This is also a second read. Do I have any additions, deletions, or questions on this policy? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for adoption?
Make a motion to, for the adoption of weapons and firearms policy?
Thank you, Jeff. Again, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this one is a first read. Board commu, board. Sorry, looked at it wrong. Board commitment to non-discrimination. B4. So this is a new one. Now would be the time to change any graphical errors. I personally didn't see anything I have a problem with.
I don't either.
I'll just say, like the policy committee, we're starting to come across a lot of these. They just need to be approved again and updated for adoption. And so those ones, we're, we're just trying to get back to the board so we can get through the ones that we need to discuss a lot further before presenting boards.
That's great.
And these seem to be like a few of them that we're hitting tonight.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Do I have a motion to, oh, I don't need a motion for this one. This is the first read. So mark that and that'll come back to us maybe in December, probably in December. Otherwise, we hold up all the other super, or other school districts. hold up all the other super, or other school districts. The next one we have to review is a first read on public participation at board meetings. I like the way this one is. Anybody have any questions, changes? A hearing none. This will be approved as the first reading and come back to us in December. Transportation. This is first read.
I do have a question going back to the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not your fault.
We're gonna go back to the public participation at board meetings.
The, one thing that I noticed that was missing from when we were discussing this earlier this year was that if, um, so many people are saying the same comment that the chair has the right to ask if, you know, someone not to speak if that is what they're also going to say or something like-
Right.
Along that line. I don't know if that needs to be in the policy, but that was just one thing I remembered we discussed that isn't in it.
Right. I didn't know if maybe perhaps Chris number two would cover that. Um, the board can authorize a chair to use a speaker's list. And if the members of the public, um, have an opportunity to sign it, if they're indicating the same topic.
We could, we could change that. Like, so I know that, uh, you know, there's a procedural thing.
Right.
But we could add that in here. So that, I think that makes sense.
Okay, I do too. Yeah. You'll notice I only read that one meeting, but it was so long. Okay. So that was a first read, but that will come back again next meeting. Transportation policy. The only thing I would like added to this, um, in the past, we've had problems and with the route, the stops, what's safe, not safe. Um, parents upset because we are somewhere where they think we shouldn't be or we should be stopping. Um, I just think, I'm wondering if we shouldn't say that, um, the final decision of where the stop should be will be solely on who, you or principal.
It says a superintendent.
Right, further down, yep.
Oh, for the school board for approval.
Right.
In the contract, it states, Chris has the final say.
I ha- I have a question on this too.
Okay.
Um, because we, for Rutland Town, it's, and maybe it's just in our handbook, it clearly states that transportation is only within Rutland Town stops.
Right.
This is an SU.
Right. So that we just keep that procedure in our handbook.
Right, as long as it's procedure. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. But if you remember, we've had-
We can't drop them off at karate.
No.
And-
Or the, or-
Horseback riding and-
Or the church or-
Right. Cause they'll say, well, you drive right by it.
Right. Um, exactly. And we, in the past, at times-
Only within Rutland Town.
Right. At, in ti- at times we have had where we've picked them up at a corner or something in Rutland City because we're going right by. But, um, that hasn't happened in a number of years. So, um, I just, somewhere in here, I just want it to be known. If you remember, we've, in the past, we have had prolonged discussions, um, with parents that are bound and determined that we need to send the bus here.
Right. And we just say it's not always door-to-door pickup.
Right. And so I'm just trying to, um, they've been pretty prolonged discussions. I, I think once a decision is made, it should be final, um, upon superintendent's approval. I mean, it's not that we're not going to listen. Perhaps it's a simple thing that can be adjusted, but once a decision, final decision's made, it's just that. Um, so I don't know if that's something we want to put in or should we change it in our policy?
But-
Or our procedure.
Doesn't, won't this supersede our Rutland Town policy? Like, aren't we all trying to get on the same page?
We are.
So this would replace that in the handbook?
Not our, no.
Cause we could just have a procedure.
That's procedure.
That's procedure?
Right.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Right. So if we change it in the procedure, it does not affect this.
Okay.
So we'll just make sure that it's in the procedure.
I feel like it says policy, but I'm looking to you.
I think it says policy.
I think it says it's a Rutland Town school policy. I'm not, cause I said that's our school board policy. That's what I've always-
I mean, it's sim- it's similar to what this says.
Right.
But it's, we will only provide transportation within the town.
I, I don't believe Rutland Town is a separate transportation policy. You know, they may be-
I don't know. We may.
Pre-mergered, maybe floating around. So I can't-
It, it probably.
I think we may.
So, but that, that would be something we need to, cause as I've gone through, cause like, this is the problem we've had, like looking for well-spreads.
Right.
Uh, who, they believe that, cause I, I'd be interested also just to look at the Rutland Town transportation policy if you can find that. Cause there are some other issues that we've covered, but-
Right.
We've out, uh, provide transportation for, for students, you know, that we dope transports. So if you choose to go to this school, we're, we, you know, we, we're not going to provide you transportation to attend this school. So you want to go to high school, say, here.
Right. And we can't. I mean, when you're talking the number of students we have, we can't make three hundred and eight different stops.
I, I think this policy really is just more about in terms of just establishing routes, stops. I know that there are a few instances that I've had with, uh, you know, with Donald or Betcha. John's been great, but there have been concerns, um, about, you know, stops, whether they can really get into a certain place. And, uh, but we, we had, there was a student issue in another district where, um, you know, basically that, you know, didn't feel safe to drive up there because of, you know, during mud season or winter.
Oh, yeah.
But, but working through issues or problems, you know, through this. But there's also a couple, um, dogs along the way that, uh, parents didn't feel safe because dogs weren't trained and they weren't leashed. So, uh, they're worried about that. So, but, but I think we, we worked through this. So.
If you want to just look, um, Sarah, and even if it says policy-
Looking right now.
Perhaps the board could look at a procedure, um, procedure outline instead of saying policy on it.
We can bring that back to the next meeting. So I think we're looking at more of the S. So we, if you want, I mean-
No, this is fine in general. Um, I just, you like, it says here, the superintendent shall submit to the board-
Yeah.
For approval, contracts, leases or purchases. Um, but it does not mention that you have last say of the routes themselves. So who's in charge of the actual bus routes?
It looks like he is above that. Let me consider-
There's a discrepancy there because the contract says-
Betcha.
Uh, that Betcha, Don Kirby-
Yep.
Does the routes. And then the other thing says that it's, Chris has the final say.
Jeff is correct.
You're right. It does fall the-
I tried to get them to change that, but they-
Would take care of that.
So maybe it needs to say like, with consultation with Betcha or some, or with the company or something like that.
Transportation.
Get that, sorry.
Oh, maybe it needs to say something like in consultation with the lea- bus leasing company or something.
It's, it's in the district contract.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that, that would affect the whole union because we all have Betcha, correct?
Jeff, why don't we, uh, at the next policy committee, we'll, and you know, Louis is one of the few left here. Everybody else left on us.
Oh.
Guess we bored them.
Yeah, we did.
Uh, so, um, maybe at the next policy committee, we'll bring a copy of that district contract language. We can look maybe to, uh, include that in there just to, you know, clarify that issue. Just take, if that's the language we're signing off on, then our policy should also reflect that. Or if we don't like that, then we could take a look at it. So.
So the transportation policy I'm putting on hold. It is not really a first read until we get it back, until it's reconciled.
Well, it does say busing procedures. It doesn't say busing policy in our handbook.
Yeah.
It's procedures.
So it's procedures. Okay.
I think I just used that word when I shouldn't.
Okay. Yeah. Just get that to, to Chris to look at.
I just got to stop saying policy.
Okay.
Cause I've told parents that. I think I've just said it. Like, well, our busing policy, I should just, I just need to change that to procedure. I just looked to.
Okay. Um, the next one we have is-
Sure, it's sweet.
Yep. Limited English proficiency students. Boy, I don't remember ever reading this.
This is a, as Billy said, another just came from the VSP policy.
Generic. That's what I figured. Does anybody have any recommendations, any problems with this? Otherwise we'll mark it as first read. All set?
All set.
Thank you. Looking for the thumb. Okay. Now, did you want us to do anything with the, um, winter sports or wait? I printed it out.
Oh, I, we, no, I think we're-
We're all set with that.
We're good, yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we were gonna put that out or not.
Well, yeah, it's already out there. I think, I think maybe as we get closer, we could just continue to remind.
Okay. It's just that I, I, you know, I, I thought maybe, not that people care, but I might have more clout if the board is also behind it and not just the administrators for our winter sports. But we, we can look back at it.
I do a little muscle behind the things. That's what I'm doing.
I just try, and I'm trying to keep you out of the death threats. That's all.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next meeting is December 13th. Not gonna work well.
Why not?
I don't know. You want to meet on the 27th? If we need a second meeting?
Of December?
Yeah.
No, that's why I said January 3rd.
Really, um, we can, we can, let's play by ear. And on the 13th, we can figure it out because I have to look in January to see when our actual pre-town is. I don't know.
It's usually the third or, third week or so, or second.
But I'll look that up. I did have it at one, one time or other, but I don't have it on top of my head. Okay. So our next meeting will be the 13th. And if I could, have a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.